In just a minute, when I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody would please stay standing for a moment of silence for the Parkland shooting that happened a year ago from tomorrow. So, all right. You want to do the pledge? I mean, you want to do the roll call first?
Excuse me. Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Do we want to make a motion to excuse him?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Councilman Schroeder. Councilmember Schroeder's.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. Please stand for the pledge and stay standing.
Pledge of Allegiance, supply of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a few moments for the Parkland.
Our Eagle Scout, Anthony Beckman, come on up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. My name is Anthony Beckman. I'm from troop 160, and I'm asking for permission to complete my Eagle Scout project at Rolling Oaks Barn. What I'm doing is a running corral near the restroom facilities so people with horses can put their horse in this corral, use the restroom, come back. It's not really meant for a long-term thing. It's more of like a five-minute comeback. Like, the reason why I came into this project, me and my friend were doing a conservation cleanup at Equestrian Park, and we saw that we may have needed more of those. We talked to December, and she said that Rolling Oaks Barn needed one and not the Equestrian Park. So I ended up doing more research, and instead of using the wood, we're using PVC fencing because it's what matches the park. I think it's on the next slide. Yeah, right there, it's like a little L-bend, and we're going to add two more sides to it and either replace or cut out new holes so we can put the boards in. And it's just going to make everything a lot easier instead of building a whole new one. We're getting Josh Dykes to help out to getting the materials, and he's bringing his bobcat to help dig the holes. And I think we're getting a four-foot metal fence, so with a lock on it, or not a lock, a chain, so you can close it up. You don't have to worry about your horse leaving because I was informed that it's illegal to tie up your horse in the town of Southwest Ranches. So this actually is going to help out a lot at that barn. And is there any questions?
Yeah, you taught me something new. I had no idea it was illegal to tie up your horse. So, what's the dimensions of this? How, what's the size of this?
I believe it's going to be 17-foot boards going across and a four-foot gate.
Okay, so it's going to be 17 feet square, you know, 17 by 17?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions up here for him?
No, no questions, just a comment. It's something that's needed in that park. It's, the other turnout's 10 acres, and if you've got an unruly horse, you might have a field day trying to catch him.
Yep.
So this kind of increases the odds that you'll get him quicker. It's a great project. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, as I do for everyone in Eagle Scouts that come to the town of Southwest Ranches, always contribute $100. So come get this $100 as your initial startup. Pleasure, absolutely. Don't mind a bit. Glad to help out. So...
Here, I'll give $100 too.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. Okay. We're good. We're at public comment.
Okay, Mayor, we have...
You want to read the rules first or no?
Sure. We have four speakers tonight. The rules for public comment are outlined in the agenda. Basically, all speakers are limited to three minutes. All speakers will fill out the request card and turn them in, which they have done, and if there's a request for more time, the first 30 minutes of the meeting are designated for public comment. If we need more time, we can take it at the end of the meeting. So with that said, I have four speakers tonight. The first speaker is George Kalis, followed by Barbara Kalis.
George Kalis, 6721 Hancock Road. I want to go on record and say that I'm not against any farms. I'm not against any nurseries. I'm not against open space. I am against 30 truckloads of manure next door to me. They tell me that it won't harm anything, and there's nothing to it, but I've got a report here. I dug it up for the area and for Broward, and I think you all have a copy of this. At least Robert said he gave you a copy. Robert?
Okay. Well, let me...
Mr. Kalis, copies were furnished to the council.
Okay, let me read a few inserts, if you will. Horse manure can pollute groundwater or surface water due to the NP and carbon, organic matter content. These nutrients can reach waterways as surface runoff or leachate from the manure pile. Any NO3 not taken up by plants can easily move through the soil and eventually leach into the groundwater and become a human health concern. No farm operations shall become a public or private nuisance as a result of a change in ownership. Active horse areas and corrals are disturbed areas which can cause dust to become airborne. This airborne dust is particularly polluting, and it can sift through neighboring properties and into neighboring's lungs, causing respiratory or other health problems. Dust may become airborne during the time of activity or at a later date, especially during high-wind events, since the surface soil crust has been disturbed. Most would agree that the smell of manure is not pleasant, but describing the scent as dangerous is another thing entirely. Still, the description is accurate. In concentrated enough doses, the gases that cause the smell are toxic and could cause health problems in people and animals, including asphyxiation. It can cause sudden respiratory failure, coma, and death. Now, this part is pretty interesting to me because I understand we really can't do anything about it, but let me read this. The village of Wellington, town government decided years ago to do something about the problem and passed a rule that you are not allowed to stockpile or spread horse manure around Wellington. You must load up your horse manure and dump it somewhere other than in Wellington. That could be next door to me. Also, okay, one more. The State Department of Environmental Protection does not approve of manure compost and dumping because horse manure is high in phosphates and leaks into the delicate water system, seeping into shallow water that we have here in Florida. I think you get the picture. This gentleman come here, it was five months ago, and I've been told he has rights, okay? I've been here 50 years. Where are my rights? I have neighbors that would, it would add up to 250 years that are against this. Where are their rights? What do I want? I want this to stop, and I want what's there to be hauled out. Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Kalis, followed by David Kozinski, and last speaker is Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening.
You can pull that down.
Hi, my name is Barbara Kalis, and our main concern is I have COPD. Breathing this is not good for my lungs. I have a letter coming in from the pulmonary doctor that I need to stay away from it. I can't even walk to my mailbox without smelling this atrocious thing. I've been in real estate in this area for over 40 years. Not only is it, it devaluates the property. This gentleman, by buying this property, he's going to pay, or should pay roughly about $7,800 a year. If he gets an agriculture exemption, it's going to be peanuts. We've been there 50 years. Our taxes are a lot more than what he's going to be paying. It's bringing the property values down on Hancock Road, on Mustang, and on Luray. It is an eyesore. I wish all of you, we've asked you to come out and take a look. It looks like vagrants, and homeless people live there. It's not maintained, and in five months, it's absolutely pitiful. Your cooperation in looking at this would be greatly appreciated, and it's just not Sunshine Ranches. This can be happening in Rolling Oaks, Green Meadows, Country Glen, everything. You're putting the whole area into a big problem. Thank you.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, just want to announce that at our February 27 meeting, we're going to have a speaker from the South Florida Wildlife Center. They're going to give a presentation on their amazing facility where they rescue and rehabilitate injured wildlife. Personally, I've brought injured squirrels, birds with broken wings, and a couple of years ago, a neighbor of mine, Craig, and I rescued an injured vulture that had a broken wing, and we had to get a big tarp to capture it, and I thought about the irony of try a lawyer rescuing a vulture. So, yeah. Second issue that I have is, and that meeting's going to be on the 27th in two weeks, second issue that I've had is mail theft and the issue with porch pirates. Recently, in the last two weeks, there has been a lot of mail theft in Sunshine Ranches. This morning, I woke up, found my mailbox door open. Neighbors down the street, their mailbox doors were left open as well. I didn't have anything in mind because I cleaned it out, but I, you know, one of my neighbors rarely picks his mail, and was like... The Friday before, our mailman told me that a couple hours after going down Mustang Trail, once again, all the mailbox doors were left open after he had left. He says he always closes them. So somebody's going house to house. The week before, on a Friday, I'm assuming it was a Friday because the next morning, Saturday, I was walking my dogs along Old Sheridan, and I found a mail package there, and I contacted somebody about it, and apparently the owner of the package, it was like a, something you get from Amazon or eBay, package was ripped open. I found it on Old Sheridan. The resident lives on Luray, and I was told that that resident had not been in town. So there's been a lot of mail theft, and I'm going to speak about trying to organize my neighbors in Sunshine Ranches, and maybe the other neighborhood, neighbors can organize as well. Thanks.
Next speaker is Noel Hollingsworth, followed by the final speaker, Kate Chapels.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'd like to conclude my thoughts on the release of liability form that I was talking about at the last meeting and ran out of time. The town administration and all the employees that work for the town are covered for any action that they take while they are employed and in their course of their employment. The town council is covered by errors and omissions and a liability policy, but the boards are not covered under any policy of the town. This release of liability takes any liability and removes it from the town for the actions of the board or boards that they take while, as a board, I'm not talking about rogue-type situations or those types where Paragraph III, where you say you're something that you're not. I'm talking about actions that you take as a board member, as a member of the board. This takes all of the liability in case the town is sued and the board is named and places it on the individual board members, and absolves the town of any liability and responsibility for the defense of that individual, irregardless if they were doing their job properly and within the confines of the rules and regulations of the town. This happened almost once a number of years ago to the Comprehensy Plan Board where we were going to be named. I don't know if the suit ever went forward or not, but at the time, the council said the board would be protected. This removes the town's liability completely and totally. So I do not desire to put myself into such a quandary of having to hire a lawyer and defend myself and have found that the town is at responsibility having to pay for the town. So I will not sign, as it stands, this liability form as I said last time because it is not fair, and we have no, we're giving up any responsibility of the town, and we are assuming it as an individual, and we are putting our property and our families in jeopardy for serving the town. And the town should be serving us.
Mary Kate Chapels, I just want everybody to know that now we have flashing lights at Dykes and Sterling, which makes it really exciting now because they see flashing lights and figure that everybody that can get through there as fast as they can before the next guy on the other end tries it. At any rate, we're getting there. So I'm assuming the flashing lights are, they're just getting all the light, the electric hookup. Prior to that, everybody thought the lights were out temporarily, so that was a big zoo too. It's been exciting watching this happen for the last three months, but hopefully they'll have it done maybe in another month, and we'll have some resemblance of sanity there at that intersection. And somebody said to me, wow, how did that intersection get so big? It used to be just like two streets, but now what they did was they moved everything back so it made the center look huge, massive. So now you have to run to get across, which you really don't, but that's what it looks like. So if you're on a trip in the town and you would like to see something exciting, use Dykes Road and/or Sterling, and preferably around 4:00. The other thing I'd like to, I did call the police. There are ATVs, and it's not one kid doing, you know, raising up and going down the road. There's two, side by side, kids on one ATV, and they're young, and they run the whole length of Sterling Road from Dykes to 166, and then back, and then again, and I called the police. They're doing it between 4:00 and sundown, and it's very dangerous, and they're going to get killed, and then it's going to be the responsibility of the driver, the car, that kills them. And I haven't been able to follow them. I mean, I did catch up to them, but they cut through the field, but I'd like to find out where their parents are and make them aware of what these kids are doing on that street. We also have, like, golf carts, souped-up golf carts, and they're also racing up and down 166. They're also cutting the fence lines and turning the horses loose, and George Williams' cows, they were out the other day. I don't know what the fascination is in letting them loose, but that's what they're doing. And it's been four times now, the horses have been turned loose up the street, and two days ago, cows were all out. So just giving you a heads up on it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment, or anyone who hasn't filled out a card that would like to come up and speak? You can always fill it out later. All right, seeing public comment is closed then. Back to the council. Any board reports?
I'm here for the Education Advisory Board.
Good.
Just wanted to let you all know, the Education Advisory Board's, I don't know the gentleman's name, but he donated these really cool challenge coins that are with the Southwest Ranches logos on the front, the American flag's on the back, so we are selling them, all the proceeds from them all goes towards the scholarship fund, and they're $15 each. So if anyone here would want, I have several, if you want to take a look at them. On March 9, we're also hosting a hoedown in Southwest Ranches at the barn. It's March 9 from 7:00 to 11:00 o'clock. It's $50 a person. Going to be lots of fun, music, dancing, wine dancing. The tickets are $50 per person, or if you have a table of 10, it's a $25 discount on the table. So again, I have tickets for those if anyone has any interest, and for either the challenge coins or the tickets, you can pick them up at Town Hall. And on March 30, the Seek Temple is having a 5K run, walk, whatever you want to do, and just trying to bring the community together, and all of the proceeds, Mayor's holding up the flyer, and all the proceeds from that, they are donating to the town of Southwest Ranches Scholarship Fund. So if anyone has any interest in that, please go on the informations on the town website. You can just scan the barcode, and you can register. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional board reports?
I don't usually get up here and give you a board report, but we had a meeting last night, and one of the two things that are going to be on our push list is, one, trying to clean out the Rolling Oaks two ponds and get rid of the exotics that are overtaking it again around the pond, and the other one is to try to get rid of the exotics that are growing on the property. They were there, but now they're with a vengeance on country estates. And the thing about exotics, these are pechopias. They grow 18 feet a year with a vengeance, and they also have a seed base that's growing with them, so they can become pretty dense. You'll be lucky if you can get your arm between them once they get going. And they're choking out the natives, where there's oak trees in there and other trees, and they're choking them out. If we can get rid of them now, it'll be a lot cheaper than if we wait until they're so big that it requires a lot of money to clear that property again. So we're going to come up with a plan and submit it to you, give you an idea on what it's going to run. It won't be out for bid, but we can get people to give us a pretty good idea of what it's going to run to get rid of it. The other thing that we discussed was that we're paying to keep the area in the back, the three and a half acres in the back, clear of exotics, but the problem is that we may be able to put the pond in, the wetland area and pond that was supposed to go back there, which would, right now, we're just maintaining something until we can put the pond in, and that's kind of throwing money down an open hole, as far as I'm concerned. So what we're going to do is come back to you with a price and see what we can do and possibly tap Astronite Foundation for some money and see if we can't get this whole thing under control out there. It's used a lot, believe it or not. That part is, people walk those trails. I'd like to make them really nice trails and clean out all the exotics that are in there. So that's just a heads up. We'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional board reports? Seeing none, we'll go to council member comments. Jerry, go first.
Yeah, I'll lead off. Thank you, Mayor. Keeping it in my usual brief, just got a few announcements to make. Debbie Green preempted me a little bit on there on some of them, but I'll go, just to reiterate it. The Education Advisory Board has got a lot of things going on right now. We have the, what they call the challenge coins, and they're very nice. If you're handy at home, you can make a nice keychain out of it by drilling a hole and putting a key in it, and they're $15 each, and the proceeds go immediately all to the scholarship fund, and I'd like to thank the creator of the coins. I forgot the gentleman's name.
Louis Gregory.
Thank you. He donated a substantial portion, if not all of it, I believe, the manufacturing of the coins. Just want to also mention that the Education Advisory Board on the March 9 is having a really nice party at the barn. It's $50 a ticket from 7:00 to 11:00, and there's going to be plenty of food and a lot of camaraderie, a lot of people, probably a lot of adult beverages, things of that nature. So it's usually a lot, it's a lot of fun, and I urge everybody to go. It's for a worthwhile cause. Our Flowmobile is going to be here this month on the 28th, and on the 28th of March from 10:00 to 2:00. So get here early if you need to do some car registration or driver's license type stuff. I also want to wish Councilmember Schroeder a speedy recovery. As you all know, she's had a very serious operation here last week, and, you know, I know she's going to be listening to this, and I hope, Dee, I hope you get better quick, please. And I want to make, let everybody know that this Saturday is the Townwide Garage Sale. You can get the maps at the Equestrian Park. There'll be signs placed out, I believe, in front of all the homes that are registered on it so you'll know when it is. It's from 8:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning till about 2:00 noon, 12:00 noon, somewhere right in there. On the 30th of March, the Seek Temple is holding a 5K walk/run. I'll be in the crawl portion of it, if I can attend. It's $20, and if you're under 12, it's $15, and it starts at 6:30 registration. I believe the run/walk starts at 7:00 o'clock. And I've got a course going throughout Green Meadows, I believe, I'm not sure exactly where it's all at, but it's for a worthwhile cause. All the proceeds go to the Education Advisory Board Scholarship Fund. We also have Bingo at the Barn coming up in May. I'll be announcing it as it progresses. $20 a person, a lot of fun. Everybody really enjoys it. It's in May on the 4th. That'll be, you know, forthcoming in future meetings. We're also going to have the Easter egg hunt. I don't have a date for that yet at the Rolling Oaks Park, but we'll announce that as we get closer to Easter in April. And... And I believe that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Would you like to get Bob?
Sure. So, I'm glad you didn't bring up the Country Estates BBQ. That way I have something to talk about. So, we're having, Country Estates is having the fourth annual barbecue at Country Estates Park. That's the park that Gay was talking about that needs some work in the back. It is on 3:30, same day as the Seek Run-Walk, it's in the afternoon, they're in the morning, we're in the afternoon. It's from noon until 4:00 PM, and every year, it's gotten better and better. We have stuff for the kids, we've got music, we've got great food, so I'd encourage you to come on out. And I had an idea that we haven't discussed at the board yet, but, you know, Gay talks so much about these trees, my hobby is kind of nature, and nature walks and tours, and I do that stuff all the time, so maybe we could take a walk to the back to show everybody where we need to spend their tax dollars, because Gay is right, this stuff, the problem with pachyphas and some of the exotics that are back there is, they outgrow the native stuff, they outgrow the trees that are back there, so they'll end up choking off the good stuff, and we'll have nothing but a mess to clean up, so. In any case, I figured I'd tie that into the barbecue. Couple of other things, now, what's the difference between a barn dance and a hoedown? Where I'm from, they're called barn dances, is that the same as a hoedown?
Yes.
Wow. Same thing?
The ticket actually says barn dance.
All right. It's a New York thing. All right, anyway, so Gary talked about that. I did want to address a couple of the comments that were made tonight. George and Barbara, I know this is going through the code process as well right now, that there's, those guys have been, I believe cited, maybe Keith, you can give an update on the status of the actions that are going through the process, when it's your turn to talk. Thank you. David, porch pirates, is David still here? I've been writing articles for, what is it called, Davy, Southwest Ranches and Weston, that magazine that comes out, DRW, the magazine that comes out at the beginning of every month. I've written them on, so far, one article was on identity theft, another one was on mail fraud, my next one is on porch pirates. So, there's some ways you can protect yourself against these people, for lack of a better term, but I get the police reports now on a weekly basis, and some on the council, and it's shocking, shocking, the amount of theft that's going on in our homes. And it's obvious, you know, if they go into some neighborhoods, they're gonna get boxes this big, in our neighborhood, they seem to be this big, so where would you go if you were a crook? And these guys, there's a couple of things we can do to stop them, and then our next best hope is the Davy Police, and I know they're focusing on it, I've mentioned it, there's a number of different people that are regularly now calling the police when they hear or see, but I'll say the same thing as I've been saying month after month, if you see something, say something. You know, I heard, I think I might have mentioned this last time, there was some mail fraud going on over in Sunshine Ranches, a couple of the neighbors saw what was going on, and they didn't even think about it until they found out that their neighbor was ripped off, and, "Oh, I saw him." Well, you know what? Talking about it two days later doesn't help the victim. If you see something, if you see somebody checking everybody's mailbox, if you see somebody suspicious that's picking certain houses, and they look like they're knocking on doors, they might be stealing mail, and if it isn't you this time, I mean, it's only a matter of time, it's getting really bad out there. And it's not just us, I mean, these guys are professionals, they make their living at stealing, and then selling it at the flea markets. So, just to bring that up, Newell, you were talking about the release of liability. Keith, I heard Newell's comments about protecting the boards against liability, providing them, I guess, liability insurance. I know we've never done it, because I've been on boards forever, but are any of the other municipalities providing that type of insurance for their boards?
No.
Okay. So, generally viewed, is not necessary?
This liability waiver has nothing to do with boards.
It's in general?
It's involving the individuals on the board, not the board.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant, does anybody provide any insurance to protect the members of their boards?
No.
Okay, okay. Gay, I'm all for supporting the two projects, two sets of projects you brought up. We've, you and I have been talking for months about what's going on over in Roca. It turns into a swamp, it's probably a swamp today with all the rain we got, unless those things get cleaned out. I remember one of the barbecues, or one of the events that Roca had last year, Davy came in, they could only use the periphery of the driveway there, because everything, two cars back, was flooded, so it's something we need to do to get better use of the park. One other thing that I talked to Keith about, that I've heard at several of the Rolling Oaks meetings, and Andy, if I'm blindsiding you, I apologize, you and I didn't talk about it in our meeting. You know, we got the guardrails out west of Bonham and Mitchell Boulevard when we had some fatalities, we have guardrails east of 75, they were put in when the road was widened. When you go from Weston Road to Bonham and Mitchell Boulevard, there were guardrails at the intersections where, you know, the streets come in from the south. I'd really like to see us fill in those gaps, because the accidents where people go into the canals aren't necessarily, although we have had them drive right through those guardrails going straight, but typically, it's somebody losing control of their car and veering into the canal. Those, you know, the guardrails at the intersections are helpful if you happen to get lucky and have your accident there, but there are pretty long stretches, 300, 400, 500 yards between the roads, that we don't have any protection, and I spoke to Keith, and Keith, you mentioned that you might be able to get something started at the county level on that.
It is a county issue.
Right, right. So, if you have any kind of an update, I know we only just talked about it recently, if you can talk, just keep it back of mind for now, but I want to move this up.
I reached out to Richard Tornese yesterday, didn't get back from him today, but I'll have an update by the next meeting.
Couldn't ask for more than that, thank you, Keith. Last thing is, people have made mention of Dee. I've known Dee a long time, if there's anybody who could pull through this whole thing, this whole ordeal she's going through, it's Dee, she's a very strong person. You know, best wishes out to Dee, if she's watching this, but we've been communicating as well, she'll pull through, I'm totally confident in that, she's a tough cookie. Aster is also back in the hospital right now, for those of you who know Astronite, we got information yesterday that, from the surgery he had, shoot, it's probably three months ago already, two and a half months ago already, he seems to have some complications that some additional relatively minor surgery is able to address. I haven't gotten an update on him today, but Aster's pretty tough, too, so I'm sure he'll pull through. But, you know, best health out to Aster, he's been battling for a while now. Thank you.
Frank?
Yeah. One thing I want to do, I don't know how many of y'all heard, but my wife had passed away recently, and I want to thank you for all the support that my family has received during this time. And on the thing with Dee, my daughter and I took some food over to her and visited her this week, and she's doing real well. If you get a chance, do that, go by and talk to her, I know she was, I appreciate seeing you, because she's sitting there, and she's got a lot of problems at this time. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Yes, Dee's moving along quite well. I would expect her back by March, that's just my opinion. So, the surgery went well, things went good, she's seen the doctor, and he's confident that he got everything he needed to get, and so hopefully, she's got a clean bill of health moving forward. Now, it's just the recovery process, but she's doing pretty well. Aster went in yesterday, I guess it was, and today, they operated, they had to drain some fluid off his brain that he had, causing him some pressure, some issues, but he's in Cleveland Clinic, and I'm told he's in ICU and recovering quietly, but good. So, we'll keep an eye in our ears, and prayers out for both of them. Something else I wanted to bring up, we have a member that would like to be on one of our boards, our School Advisory Board, and Francesca Case, and we have eight members on there now, this would make nine, we tend to like to keep those numbers odd for voting purposes. I just want to know if everybody has an issue with adding another member to the School Advisory Board, if that's okay? What's everybody's input? You're good? You're good? Everybody's good? Okay.
She's a good addition.
All right. Do we need to make a motion or anything for that, related to that, or no? We're good? Yes, you got that? Okay. Other than that, those of you that can participate, I'm gonna happen to do this, I'm not running it, I'm gonna walk it, so, but I figure five miles of walking surely can't hurt me. And I believe the administrator mentioned that he might participate, so I must say, I challenge any one of my colleagues that can make it and join us, come along, let's go have some fun.
Hey Doug?
Yes, sir.
If it makes you feel any better?
Yeah.
It's only a 5K, which is about 3.2 miles versus 5 miles.
Oh, that's too bad. Yeah.
Do it twice.
There you go.
10K.
I'll have to start earlier, but, hey, it may take me longer the way, hey Keith, if you're in town, you need to participate. Anyhow, okay. There you go. I love how he's mine when he's bad, he's yours when he's good, right? Okay, I'm done with my reports, so now we got legal comments, you're up to bat, Keith.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. I spoke to Dee yesterday, I just wanted to mention, she said she will be back by the next hearing, by the next meeting.
By the next meeting? Okay, all right, cool.
So, she said she will be at that meeting, so I, in fact, advised Jeff Cadens, because we had some items being held, so I said, "Are you sure?" She said, "I'm sure."
Okay.
So, yes, so that could be great news. In regards to this case against the nursery, I was not at the code hearing that it was heard, so I got an update from Robert, and I reviewed the file. This is another case in which a new nursery comes to the town, opens in a residential area, and I know it's something that the Complan Board, for Councilmember Hartman, worked on when you were on the Complan Board, and now today, is still looking into this issue and how to regulate nurseries in the future. I looked at the photos, and there's a heck of a lot of manure that was on that property. The special magistrate made a determination, his determination was that the manure on the property met reasonable farming practices for farming of land. Robert testified, and read the file completely, that there was no smell emanating from the property. The special magistrate went to the property in a site visit, which is highly unusual, and had no smell of manure on the property. Of course, knowing manure, it could have been the day that they went, it could have subsided, et cetera, but on the day in question, they did not, neither of them smelled manure. The magistrate ruled that the nursery had to plant a continuous head of auricas on the south property line, and plant a continuous head of banana plants on the south property line, and I think that was done to help shield visually the look of the property, because it's a messy nursery, and that's what he, his decision was. The town has no regulation like Wellington does, I don't even know if that regulation would be even legal today to prohibit that, but the one thing that was brought up by the resident, which is correct, is the 823 Florida statutes, which is the Right to Farm Act, protects existing farms that are there, that people move in next to the farms. It doesn't protect people who live there and that the farms move in next to them. So, the residents do have their private options, meaning to sue their neighbor under a nuisance action, it's just not something the municipality can do. Under our laws, we followed the code, the magistrate made a decision, we have to abide by the decision of our court, but they have rights themselves that we're not allowed to enforce. So, under our code, a finding was made, the palms have to be planted, if it smells again, I highly advise them to ask Robert or Julio to come out immediately to document the smell, because it's necessary for them to do so, and then we can have another go at, you know, bringing it back for repeat violation. But other than that, there's nothing more we can do, it's now left for private action.
Let me just say, we don't allow the conversation back and forth, but if you want to stay till after the meeting, you can probably ask a question.
As a matter of fact, just today, with all the rain, I invited Robert to come over and take a smell. Now, what the magistrate ruled was a vision thing, he did not rule anything about what...
You need to have this conversation after the meeting or whatever, it's not like a back and forth, open conversation. He's just responding to what your issue was, and kind of making a statement. He wasn't opening it up for a conversation, so what I would tell you is, wait till after the meeting, it's not gonna go very long, and ask them after the meeting. Okay?
Keith, just one thing I wanted to throw in, I've read the Right to Farm Act right after the code enforcement hearing, 'cause I was there for that, and in terms of pursuing the nuisance case, I believe that's only a window for them for a year? It has to do with new farms only?
Yeah, I think they have a year to file a nuisance action.
So, there's a clock ticking if they've been there five months already.
But regardless of anything, the town pursued a code violation.
Right.
And this was the finding of the magistrate, you know, there's, I mean, if you look at what we cited them for, and I read it three times and showed it to Russell, we cited them for spreading manure for crops is creating a nuisance to neighboring properties. That's what the finding was found on.
Right.
So, we may disagree with the finding, but that's what the magistrate determined based upon the evidence that was presented.
Agree, completely agree, I was here for that, but I just want, they were concerned about their rights.
They have rights.
They have rights.
And they can exercise their rights, but you're right, there's the statute of limitations on all rights.
No, it's not the town.
Yeah, okay. So, that was the first one. Second one, and I know it's on the agenda, Commissioner Hartman, but I just want to make sure that I answered your question more fully and properly concerning the liability waiver. The liability waiver prevents an individual board member from doing something that directly harms the Town of Southwest Ranches. Boards are protected, so if a board makes a decision, and the board then votes on a decision as a board, they're protected by the town. So, if they got sued, they got sued as the Complan Board or School Advisory Board, the town defends their board's actions. What the town has never done is defended an individual on that board for doing something not based upon their role as a board member, and that's what this prohibits. It prohibits someone from Complan Board, for example, to go to an event and represent that they are in charge of the Complan Board, and as a result, they want to buy 400 units of hay for a party, you know? Happens. You know, we had a resident who was a board member, you all know this resident well, in the early 2000s, say that they were volunteering and did a tremendous amount of landscape architecture work around the town, worked for a year, no one said anything, said, "Thank you," after a year, they submitted an invoice to the town for $250,000, okay? That's why this policy came into effect, to make board members acknowledge that they're not agents of the town, they're there as of volunteer purposes, and as such, they're responsible for their own actions, we're not responsible for them.
I'm glad you clarified that, that's important. Thank you.
All right. Other than that, there's no further legal comments.
When might we go to trial on Pines stuff?
Oh, Pines.
Long now.
Pines is stuck in the Fourth DCA, because Pines is doing everything in the power to try to get the court to state that they have sovereign immunity, okay, as relates to CCA. The court has previously said they have none, so they need it very badly, so they're appealing yet again to try to get it. So, that's just at a temporary standstill, but luckily, it's filled with so many code enforcement matters now, it's okay. But luckily, it's filled with so many code enforcement matters now, it's okay.
Okay. Alright, Andy Byrne, administrative committee.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, on behalf of staff, I do want to send our regards out to Councilmember Schroeder. I have spoken to her. She's speaking a little softer than, than perhaps I might be used to. But I did let her know that I look forward to having her back and yelling at me again soon. So we actually had a very good conversation and it sounds like she's really doing well. So we look forward to having her back. Some good news to pass along. We've gotten some acknowledgements from the state on our FEMA commitments. We haven't gotten any checks on those expenses yet, but we have gotten some commitments. So that, that continues to work through the, through the process. But I know Marty can answer if you have any further questions, but that, that process is working. We're getting some acknowledgements. We know that the paperwork is being processed as it needs to be. So hopefully we'll have some good news on some, some checks coming in for that reimbursement soon. And last but not least, I had some conversations with some of you recently. And I wanted to talk to you about this publicly because you may get some comments from some residents who have done some building, some home improvements, who closed out a permit or did something in the last few years where they thought they were done. And, and the town has reached out to them recently looking for an elevation certificate. This was part of our, it's FEMA-related as well by coincidence. It's part of our going through the CRS process, getting accepted back into that again is going to pay dividends for our residents in discounts on flood insurance. But as part of that process, FEMA came in and did some audits to look at our files and discovered in some cases where there were elevation certificates that were missing from the files. And so they have directed us, or certainly in our best interest, we could be penalized when we don't have those elevation certificates on, on file. So we've been reaching out to the residents in order to get those so that we can complete those files and close those out. So just in case you have a resident who reaches out to you and says, you know, I heard from the town, they're asking me for something. I did this job four years ago. What's going on? This was, was driven by FEMA. It wasn't town-related. We weren't necessarily doing an audit, trying to create problems for those residents. Hopefully, it won't be a major inconvenience for those that it is. But at the end of the day, it will pay dividends for the entire town and all the residents. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up on that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Russell, resolution number nine.
It's the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a purchase order piggybacking onto U.S. Communities Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-eight-four-six-eight with Safeware Inc. for fire station security improvements in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and eight cents. Approving a fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget amendment, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Andy, you want to explain what this is at all?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. As you all know, last year we replaced the modular unit for the fire station. And as part of our contract with Davy, there were some additional enhancements that we're contractually required to, to put in place. Some lighting, some fencing and gating, security cameras, et cetera. This, this is that piggyback that, that will allow us to beat our contractual requirements to Davy. We're using the same vendor that has done those same things for the other Davy fire stations.
Okay. Looking for a motion and a second, please.
I move to approve the contract.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Noel Hollisworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. The one area that Andy mentioned that I would like to reiterate is the lighting. Davy's lighting requirements are not our lighting requirements. We have dark skies. Davy does not. If we are piggybacking off their contract, their lighting requirements are going to be entirely different and not within the boundaries of the dark sky ordinance that we have. So therefore, a modification has to be made to make sure that it falls within the jurisdiction of dark skies. And we don't have the same problem we had when we moved in here. Do it proactive instead of reactive. Thank you.
Can I address that?
Go right ahead.
Do you have a comment, Andy?
Yeah, I was going, I just wanted to point out that, yes, we're aware of it. Yes, we are proactive. And the, the plan is compliant with our dark skies ordinance, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Newell, that was the first thing I saw. I mean, I saw three hundred watt bulbs in here. And I thought, ooh, wow, we're gonna illuminate the whole area. And there's houses out back and there's future houses to the side. I spoke to Rod about it during the week and I believe there's language in there for a photometric study. So I just hope we don't buy three hundred watt bulbs and turn around and have to replace them with thirty-five watt bulbs a couple of weeks later because they don't pass. So this is, according to Rod, this has got to be designed properly to meet our standards so that we don't have to pay for it twice.
Okay, seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I went through this. I mean, I'm an IT geek, so I had questions about the cabling and all that. Rod has either gotten it revised or, or it makes sense. Now, you were a security camera guy for a while. What did you think about the pricing?
Thought it was expensive, but, you know, it's-
But is it the right stuff, I guess, is the question.
You know, they're, they have their own specs for what they want and what they're looking for. You know, it's gotta be, the recognition, picture's a thousand words. So if you don't have decent cameras, I mean, they don't really do you any good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright. Would you call the question, please?
Yes, Mayor. It's Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution ten, please.
The resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida appointing a selection and negotiation committee, or the SC, in conjunction with the town's procurement of external audit services, enacting a cone of silence and providing an effective date therefore.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public-